City Council meeting. May we start off real quick with a roll call?
Councilmember Rarback?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose? I don't believe we have Deborah yet, Mayor.
Okay, let's wait a minute then. I see her. Let's go again.
Councilmember Rarback?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brownstone? Mayor Eisen?
Here.
You have a corner?
All right, very good. So, uh, thank you all for coming to tonight's city council meeting. Uh, I'm very appreciative to have our, to have our sheriffs here willing to show up and talk to us about the actions uh, they are taking to help keep our community safer. Uh, and also the opportunity for them to listen to our public. Uh, we are looking for a very respectful uh, meeting today to talk about ways in which we all can make sure that our communities are safer to be in and are moving in a direction that benefits everybody uh, in, in society. Um, obviously, there's the Black Lives Matter movement which is going on. Uh, and uh, and we really appreciate what the public has done to let their voices be heard. Uh, there's lots of voices in the community out there right now. And we really want to appreciate the public and the community for participating. The protests and the Black Lives Matter movement uh, have shown our community's commitment to social justice. And so, we are seeing it from both sides. We have a sheriff's department that's willing to partner with us. Uh, we have the community making their voices heard. Um, and we are really moving forward with communal goals uh, to increase our safety and make sure that everyone lives uh, in a happy and respectful way. Um, there are lots of voices out there. There's lots of different perspectives out there. Uh, we don't know what it is like to live in someone else's shoes. We don't walk through life in the same way. You know, each person walks through life with their own perspective and their own uh, um, you know, feelings. So, it's good that we're here to discuss this in greater depth and hear all these different voices. Um, so I do realize that one hour may not be enough. Uh, and we intend to dedicate more time to this. And we can have ongoing discussions uh, moving forward on these topics, moving further. Um, I, I want to let you know in all transparency how we ended up at this exact space and time. Uh, so I'm going to start off by saying that later on in our presentation tonight in our um, city council meeting, we are going to be discussing the approval or the moving forward of the sheriff's contract. Can you still see me? Can you still hear me? Yes, okay, sorry, just I couldn't tell for a second. Uh, and that is something that happens yearly. It is scheduled at the start of the year. It's part of the contract. It happens during this particular city council meeting every year. So, it's not something that's being brought up tonight because of anything else besides the fact that it is part of the regular discussion. And it's stipulated in the contract that we bring it up tonight. So, I just want people to know in full transparency why that's on the agenda tonight. Uh, I would also like people to know that the study session that is going on tonight, which is the 6:00 PM meeting right here to talk uh, about what we can do to be more united and bring together what needs to uh, if any changes need to be made and how we can make those uh, from a police department perspectives. We brought this up to really study this in depth as the protests were happening. Uh, and we realized there was a movement and we needed to learn more about what we can do um, to support uh, our sheriffs and our community to be communally oriented together. Uh, and so that's why this meeting, this study session was set up. It was, it was in haste with all the actions happening. So, again, had nothing to do with the fact that the contract was on the agenda as well. And then also, the third part coming involved in this conversation uh, was there was an officer involved shooting in Half Moon Bay. And the video for that just came out just the other day, which some people have now seen. It's been made public. And so, that is yet another reason that we're having this meeting uh, right now. But again, not all these things were 100% in lockstep to how we came to be contextually in this moment. And I just want people to understand that as best as they can from a, uh, from an understanding of the context of where we are this evening. So, with that being said, uh, I'm going to give you a little bit of an understanding of how the agenda will lay out tonight. We're going to start out from 6:00 to 6:30 with this introduction. We are then going to ask the sheriffs to introduce themselves and make a small introduction speech. Uh, at that point, we will open it up for city council to ask questions. We will last until 6:30 with that. At that point, we will open it up for the public. If we have a lot of public that want to ask questions, we might have to do two minutes per person. We're going to go from 6:30 to 6:50 where the public is just asking and speaking their minds and we are all listening. There will be not, no responses to the, the public at that point. At 6:50, we will open it back up for city council to be able to ask the sheriff's questions directly. Maybe from things that they wanted more clarification on from the public or whatever it may be. And we will finish the meeting at 7:20 once the city council has finished asking those questions. And if need be, we will schedule yet another meeting to make this go further and go further into all these topics. Um, so with that, I will ask, uh, I, I, I will ask that are, let me just make sure I hit everything. Oh, and then the last thing I wanted to say is the investigation into the officer shooting in Half Moon Bay is still not complete. It is an ongoing investigation. And so, I do want you to understand that that, we do not have any direct answers on that topic yet as that still is an ongoing investigation. Uh, so with that, I will ask Bob Nesbit, our city manager, to introduce uh, our sheriffs on the call. And again, I wanted to thank you for joining us this evening for the study session.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, member of the public. Uh, yes, it's my, uh, it's my privilege to, to introduce today uh, our sheriff, Sheriff Carlos Bolanos. He has agreed to come for the exact reasons that, that you stated, Mr. Mayor. Um, there's a lot going on uh, in the policing world at the national level, at the regional level, at our level. And as you pointed out, you thought this study session would be a good idea. You and the vice mayor uh, came up with this idea to have this session a week ago. And so, it's my uh, privilege to introduce Carlos. Also here, of course, is our chief of police, Captain Sal Lopez. Uh, he also is here to answer any questions and listen to the public. And so, with that, Carlos, I will turn it over to you. Again, thank you so much for joining our meeting tonight. We really do appreciate it. It's a great partnership that the city has with the sheriff. It's now in its ninth year. Um, and, and we really appreciate you being here uh, to both listen and to make some statements about uh, what's going on, on your end. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you very much, Bob, and uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the uh, honor of coming and uh, uh, joining you at this meeting. Uh, we're at a critical juncture uh, really in our country. Um, you know, racism is an issue that has existed since the beginning of our, of our country. And uh, you know, it is a societal issue that uh, which I believe law enforcement is a, a part of that, of course. And uh, I just appreciate the, the privilege to be here. I think uh, you will be very pleased with all the work that the sheriff's office has done in regards to our, our policies, our procedures. Uh, they are ever evolving. And uh, of course, you have one of my uh, best people, Captain Lopez, as your chief. And uh, it really is a privilege for us to be able to serve the uh, community of Half Moon Bay. Uh, we consider you our community. And we will do everything we can to continue to keep you as safe as you are. Thank you.
And at this point, uh, I, I'm sorry, just to make sure. Sal, uh, do you want to do a little introduction beforehand or should I just open it to the, why don't you do a quick intro?
Sure, thank you, Mayor and council. Again, it is my honor to serve as your chief and also the captain of the entire coast side from Pacifica to Santa Cruz. As the sheriff said, it is our privilege to uh, serve these communities here. I do have a uh, close relationship with a lot of people here on the coast side. And I feel that although we're going through troubling times now, you know, by listening and working together, we're going to get through all of this. So, thank you again for the support and we're here to listen.
That's great, thank you, thank you so much. And at this point, I'd like to open it uh, for, to the city council for a few questions before we go to public comment.
Um, I don't have any questions at this point. I'd like to listen to the public.
Okay, and, and maybe before we, we go then, I, I just want to ask one, I'll ask one real quick question before we go to the public, just to open things up. But I, I did see a great um, communication from the sheriffs in regards to the eight can't wait. And all the actions you are taking uh, with regards to that. And I, I would love it if you wouldn't mind just illuminating the actions you are taking. And maybe we can throw it up on the screen if we have the ability to as well. Um, there's one slide in particular that shows this. But some of the things that are going on from your department for the eight can't wait, just to get that out into the public eye.
So, would you like me to go?
I can go ahead and talk about the, the response, Sheriff.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I do have the, the slide that the sheriff put out. It was a great memo um, with some graphics on, for each one of the, the eight categories. And so, I will throw that up and maybe uh, that'll just be a nice visual uh, as they go through uh, the memo that they just put out, I think yesterday or the day before.
Perfect.
All right, everybody can hear me?
Yes.
So, in response to the eight can't wait um, campaign or advocacy in the community, uh, as most people know, Governor Newsom on June 5th banned chokeholds and we followed suit immediately thereafter. So, we accomplished that um, part of the, the response. Uh, secondly, uh, requiring de-escalation. All of our deputies are trained in de-escalation. And part of that de-escalation is there's a continuum of force, which is one of the other uh, part of the eight can't wait. And anytime there's a contact and that contact meets a certain criteria of use of force, once a person uh, complies with that level of use of force, the deputies are trained to de-escalate, meaning toning it down and gaining compliance in that uh, fashion to minimize uh, both injury to the person they're contacting and also to themselves. Uh, the next one is requiring a warning before shooting. We do train our staff in, in, when feasible and in an optimal circumstance. Or, you know, warning the person that does have a, a weapon that can cause uh, great bodily harm or even uh, deadly, it needs a deadly force situation. Deputies are required, or actually, they're, they're asked to, to uh, give a warning. Uh, requiring or exhausting all alternatives before shooting. Again, this goes to our continuum of force. Uh, we, we used to have 12 uh, steps of, of our continuum of force. Now, it's 11 because we've banned chokeholds. Uh, the very first one is just the officer presence. Then it escalates to verbal commands. And the last one would be deadly force using our uh, service weapon. So, uh, during that time, a deputy can use any one of those steps in order to either meet uh, and gain compliance of that person they're contacting and to uh, basically control the situation. So, there's a variety of options that um, the deputy has during any contact. Uh, the next one is duty to intervene. Uh, our policies do uh, dictate that deputies shall intervene when uh, they observe excessive force from occurring. So, uh, we, we are requiring that of people, of our deputies. And uh, you know, we do have body worn cameras and we have our vehicles outfitted with camera systems. So, not only do we have that layer of in-person contact by another deputy observing those actions uh, that they see are in violation of our policy. It's their duty to intervene, but we also have the other uh, levels of uh, revi, you know, of uh, looking at, at the incident by doc, documentation. And that kind of goes to requiring comprehensive reporting. We do require that not only the deputy uh, author a special section in their uh, incident report or criminal report that they're uh, authoring. That evening, the sergeant also reviews that report and approves it. After the sergeant deems that it's within policy, they are still obligated to write a separate a use of force report which uh, goes into a database that we have in our professional standards bureau. Anytime there's a use of force in the coast side patrol bureau, those uh, patrol sergeants will send that uh, use of force to me. I will review it and I will also uh, look at the incident, not only the body worn camera video documentation and also uh, the review of the sergeant. I will make a determination if it is within our policy or it needs to be investigated further as an internal affairs investigation or even uh, meet the threshold of a criminal investigation. So, we are constantly holding all of, all of our deputies and ourselves accountable in this process. And that escalates all the way to the sheriff. The other uh, response to banning the shooting at moving vehicles. We strongly recommend that deputies avoid the path of a, of a vehicle in their direction. When, when reasonable, uh, they should not be shooting at moving vehicles because we do not recommend and we prohibit them uh, firing their service weapons at vehicles at uh, just to disable them. Again, this is only uh, if the deputy cannot avoid the path of the car towards them. So, it would be a, a lethal force i- if they do uh, discharge your weapon. I believe I've covered all of them unless someone has a question of the eight can't wait.
No, I appreciate you answering those and thank you for addressing those so quickly uh, and getting that out. So, thank you so much uh, for making progress on all those. Uh, and at that point, I guess if, if there's no further council questions and I, and we can open it up to the public. Are there any other council questions before we open it up to the public? Did you want to go, Robert?
Yeah, could we, could we put the chart back up? Uh, thanks. And you know, I think there will be a lot of questions from the public. When we see these um, various asks and requirements of uh, well, police departments across the country. Of course, the pressing question always is, you know, how are policies monitored? How are people trained? I mean, that's where a lot of the real guts of this stuff happens, right? And then, you know, what's the culture that uh, reinforces or doesn't reinforce the policies? And I was, I was curious, uh, just, and I'll just look at a couple of these, but um, in the de-escalation piece, and I'm, and you also sent us some really nice literature that you um, on these uh, subjects. Regarding de-escalation, um, you talk about, and again, this isn't a document that you put out with all the uh, nice charts. Um, it says a subject may not be capable of understanding the situation or comply with commands because of medical, medical conditions, mental, mental, physical, language barriers, drug interaction. And these situations may not make the subject any less dangerous or mean that a deputy is prohibited to be using force, but understanding a subject's situation may enable deputy, deputies to calm the subject. And I was interested in what's the interaction with, you know, other, you know, how you ascertain that? And maybe a little bit about what the training might look like with other social service agencies? Cause that, you're right, that understanding is critical. And in, you know, in a confrontational moment, how do you end up feeling like you have as much information as possible to do that ascertaining? Uh, you know, I think a lot of folks would be curious and uh, yeah, how that works.
Well, I'll, I'll kickstart this one. Uh, as you know, all of our deputies are trained in CIT, uh, critical incident uh, training, which are critical intervention, crisis intervention training, which allows, which teaches them all through uh, you know, dealing with mental health professionals as well as uh, role playing and um, you know, a wide array of instruction for, for a full week. How do, it's really about communication and trying to uh, speak to an individual when you encounter them. If you are able to, to try to ascertain what, what the issue might be. Uh, what crisis is it that they're suffering from? So that we can uh, try to help them. And we can do that as long as it's not a dynamic situation, which requires immediate action on our part. As you can imagine, it's difficult for a deputy who encounters someone um, to, you know, quickly assess and determine what uh, what crisis this person may be suffering from at the particular moment. But we try to do that through, through our training, through our experience and also through uh, communication. And Sal, feel free to add if you'd like.
And I can't, thank you, Sheriff. So, part of the de-escalation, as I said, uh, it is a time sensitive situation depending on what deputies are involved in. Now, not only do uh, law enforcement officers in general uh, get trained in the police academy, they also go through a field training program um, that exceeds 136 hours of training that deals with mental illness, the effects of trauma, PTSD, especially when a lot of veterans came back from um, from overseas wars. Also, they, they suffered traumatic brain injuries. So, part of that CIT training uh, helps the deputies or law enforcement officers within our county, specifically our office, to try to identify those things if, if time is on their side. Sometimes the situations do not allow that to occur. Uh, but after the, the 2014 incident in Moonridge, I know there's been conversation about that. And that has uh, never been forgotten by our, our office because um, the sheriff at the time and uh, the sheriff, Sheriff Bolanos now um, created a psychiatric emergency response team, which consists of two deputies um, which are detectives and two mental health clinicians from uh, behavioral health, county behavioral health that are full-time participants in this unit. And uh, this, the goals of PERT, and I know I've mentioned them in my annual reports to, to the council, is to help deputies and help families that uh, are impacted by individuals uh, facing mental health crisis every single day. And, and really to, to reduce the, the risk of violence between those individuals or violent encounters with law enforcement. Uh, PERT is also part of a program that, that we take great pride in because uh, honestly, it was created after the 2014 incident at Moonridge. We really wanted to focus. Originally, it was one detective, one mental health clinician. And due to the increase in mental health cases um, all over the county and especially the communities that we serve, uh, the sheriff uh, chose to add an additional person and, and partnered with mental health or VHS to add another clinician. And again, those are services that are never, I mean, you can't put a price on it. And the sheriff has never um, added that to any contract. And not to speak about contracts, but it is a point that we do care about uh, not only uh, you know, the community, but also the deputy's well-being. I mean, we want to help the families that are dealing with this. Uh, there's a lot of information on what PERT does. I do have some uh, some data from this year. They've had 43 5150 cases, that's the way we, we identify them, mental health crisis uh, cases in the city of Half Moon Bay. There was five referrals from patrol deputies here within the city. And PERT, what they do is they actually review and read every single incident in the entire county that in every community we serve. They read every 5150 report every morning that comes in. They evaluate it, they contact um, numerous families and connect them with uh, with mental health clinics and other type of programs. So, I know I'm very proud of it, I know the sheriff is. You know, they work with a lot of uh, a lot of organizations locally to provide more mental health programs to the families that need them. Because in a lot of the cases, deputies do not, I'm sorry, the, the families um, do not know what services are out there uh, that the county has to offer in a, in other nonprofits that are focused on mental health, um, you know, rehabilitation. So, I hope that answered uh, some of the questions, but that does involve part of our de-escalation and the way we identify certain situations that, that when time is on our side.
So, thank you, and I, that's a great overview and um, I appreciate um, you know, educating public as well as us, and I'm sure there will be some more questions. The last question I had, and again, this is more about a question that I think affects every organization, but especially law enforcement, is the notion of duty to intervene. And you know, in a lot of organizations, you know, speaking truth to power, so to speak, or even to peers, that notion of psychologically safety to say to someone else, hey, you know, you're not doing the right thing. And you know, especially if it might involve not just a peer, but a superior officer is doing something wrong. That can be very um, career threatening to some folks to do that. And my question is, how do you re, how does the sheriff's department reinforce that and make uh, sheriffs feel safe? Like you're not snitching or betraying, you know, a fellow uh, police officer? How um, does San Mateo Sheriff's Department go about uh, you know, working? Cause it's a tough issue for any organization. And I'm wondering how uh, you know, here, we here in San Mateo County work that issue through.
I think you, you, you answered the question. We do it by reinforcing the uh, the behavior that we want to see from people. And we ensure that um, you know, that there are no repercussions for people coming forward or for people who intervened. And we've had many instances of that. And uh, we also do it through uh, negative reinforcement. If somebody uh, clearly we see them on, on camera or we know that they uh, know more than what they said, then you know, we, we conduct an internal affairs investigation. It, it determines that we believe that they are not believable. Uh, we have a conversation with the district attorney uh, where uh, they may be considered for the Brady List uh, as someone who is not credible. So, it's, it's really changing the culture and uh, you mentioned, you know, snitching. Um, you know, I mean, that's a sad commentary when um, you know, we, we have that, that uh, that term that's used in the criminal uh, by the criminal element as well as by other institutions.
Anything else that might add or? I didn't know Sal wants to say something on that, but.
I, I can just echo what the sheriff said. I mean, thankfully, we're in a paramilitary organization where we do have to follow our policies or else we're held accountable. Um, I know his message to me is the same that I give to the people that work in my bureau and every other captain uh, in our office. So, the other thing that I do want to share is that um, we, we are very transparent when it comes to. we, we are very transparent when it comes to providing complaints. We have them on our website. Anybody can access them. And even externally and internally, people can choose to file a complaint with about another employee and be protected by Whistleblower Act within the county. So, everybody does does have that knowledge as a county employee and is educated in that fashion, and you know, at least my personal motto is that not only do we have to police the community, we have to police ourselves and hold each other accountable. So, I think if we reinforce that, that message over and over, you are gonna have a positive impact on those who work for you, so.
Thanks to you both, really appreciate letting me opening up some of the questions now. Are we ready to open up to the public unless someone else?
I am ready personally, but is there anybody else that would like to say, ask any questions before we do? All right, may we please open up for public comment? And just so I have a sense, Jessica, how many people are currently have their hand raised?
Right now, we have six out of nine. It's going up now that we've reached the public comment portion.
Okay, so I'm gonna assume that we're gonna at least have 10. And so, we're gonna ask, we're gonna ask for two minutes per person. Bring it on, let's go.
Okay, so, first is Tony Serrano. Tony, go ahead.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead, you're on the public comment.
Yes, thank you. Well, my name is Tony Serrano, mayor, city council members, and Half Moon Bay Committee. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. After my sister's murder six years ago at the hands of the police, and with the current spike in a larger awareness of ongoing issues of racism, mental health, and bias in our society, it gave us a valuable opportunity to accelerate the shift of our community's resources to reflect values of inclusion and support for all. In particular, those who are most vulnerable. There has been a lot of talk about we can prevent such incidents from happening again. We know that mental health crisis situations are complex and require extraordinary skills to de-escalate. Training is critical to help those who must deal with such situations. That is why the Latino Council of Half Moon Bay is proposing a mental health program that does not necessarily mean the funding or eliminating the police, but rather allocates funds to programs that will help the community keep safe. My sister's tragedy can become a legacy of education, prevention, and cooperation for the well-being of the community. This program is called Yanira Serrano Presente.
Tony, thank you so much for those comments. I don't know, were you finished? Or did you get cut off real quick?
No, I am, I am, I am finished. I want to give time to other people that want to talk about this issue.
Do you have a website for that? Is there, just out of curiosity?
There is, there is a website. We have a petition going online. It has currently close to 300 signatures. And this has been going in co-site. So, a lot of people are supporting this program, so I hope that you guys can take into consideration this program.
Yes, and just in terms of advertising it, do you, are you able to access the web address? Or should we just look it up in Google?
Well, I might be able to give you the link. It's a bit complicated, but you can, you can look for it on Nextdoor.
Nope, that's what we'll do then. All right, thank you. Just trying to get it out there. Thank you so much for speaking up, we really appreciate your comments. And Jessica, may we move on to the next person?
Yeah, thanks, Tony. Next, we have Nate Sertie. Nate, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everyone, how are you? Nate Sertie, I am a local businessperson, board chair of the Chamber of Commerce here in Half Moon Bay, making my statements. Aside from that, I'm born and raised here on the coast, 42 years old. I just wanted to, I'm very glad to hear Mr. Serrano on the phone call and the first person, because I remember whenever this happened years ago, me being very shook by something like this that happened to an 18-year-old here in our community. To have to experience this, I actually lived in Pacifica about a year, a year before that. And there was another person that was also shot in front of his home in Pedro Point, out of his home, also with a mental disability as well. I watched the body cam shot last night, and it, first off, my heart goes out to Mr. Serrano to lose a sister. But I would like to echo and say that as we talk about the reallocation of costs, I know people are talking about defunding the police department, and I'm not for that, but I think we do need to focus on the reallocation of money to the resources that are available for us. And I'd like to see the sheriff's department, who I respect very much, and I'm glad they keep us safer on the co-side, and for what they do, I have friends who are also in the service as well, but I I just would like to see that sort of transparency, that energy go into the response to the mental health, and those with mental disabilities, and being able to focus on that, because people, we've noticed that people are dying, and it's too close to the home. It's too close to our community. And it's just a shame to have this happen. And I'd just like to also extend my, you know, I will sign that thing by Mr. Serrano as well. And just hope that as a city and as a, as council, we can focus more on our mental health response. And that's just all I have to say, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Nate. Good comments. Oh, sorry.
Next, we have Miranda Holton. Miranda, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, so thank you all so much for holding this forum. My name's Miranda Holton, I am a resident of Half Moon Bay, I grew up here. And I'm also a rising third-year law student at UC Hastings in San Francisco. So, Councilwoman Penrose was quoted in the Half Moon Bay Review today stating that our officers seem to be well-liked in the community, and that she has not heard any complaints. And I comment tonight to issue a complaint. After a Minneapolis police officer knelt on George Floyd's neck for eight minutes and 46 seconds, slowly suffocating him to death as he pleaded for his life, all because of his alleged use of a fake $20 bill, San Mateo County Sheriff Sergeant Dennis Lubal, who has worked in Half Moon Bay for many years, including with children at CUNY and Half Moon Bay High, posted several racist comments on Facebook. One comment read, and I quote, "Mr. Floyd was a career criminal with multiple prison stints for robbery with firearms, who was described by the original reporting party as highly intoxicated, used a fake $20 bill to buy cigarettes, not exactly a family man buying food for his wife and child," end quote. Officer Lubal's comments were morally reprehensible and implied that George Floyd's past actions somehow justified his brutal murder. His comments also sowed a shred of doubt in my mind about whether he would have intervened had he been on the scene of George Floyd's murder. That is not someone I want walking around my community with a deadly weapon. Many members of our community have even worse stories to tell about Officer Lubal. The fact that the councilwoman has not personally heard any complaints does not in any way mean that no such complaints have been issued, whether formally or informally. The two officer-involved shootings in Half Moon Bay, when viewed with the other officer-involved fatal shootings that have occurred in the nation, appear to be part of a larger pattern. That is to say, these shootings did not occur in a vacuum. They are not isolated incidents. They indicate that our entire system of policing needs to be reevaluated. And tonight, you might hear a lot of great stories about police officers, you might hear about good cops. I urge you to evaluate who is making those statements and who is not. Evaluate what the good or kind actions in those stories truly are. Could you replace the police officer in any of these nice stories with, say, a social worker, an unarmed member of the city or county government, a mental health professional, or a paramedic, and still have the same positive result? If so, I urge you to think deeply about why it is we need armed officers for these situations at all. I urge you to think deeply about what this community truly needs so that everyone is safe. Maybe the money would be better spent on public health, affordable housing. And so, I really just urge you all to keep all of this in mind as you consider your contract renewal with the county sheriff's department. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that well-researched and eloquent speech, Miranda. Well, well, well said.
Next, we have Stacy McCarthy. Stacy, go ahead.
Hi, this is RJ. I am Stacy's husband, and I am very happy that this country is finally waking up and addressing these issues. As a black man in this country, I have spent a lot of time behind the wheel talking to officers, and most of the time with no ticket. So, what I want to say, I want to say a lot of things, but I will keep it fairly brief here. One is, I'd love to hear what the demographics are of the local sheriff's department, and what are the plans to continue to grow the demographics so that it represents the community? And, you know, as I look at this page, what I see, and it's what I see all the time wherever I go, and that is a lot of faces that don't look like I do. And I think compassion can go so far unless you're in our shoes. And so, how we begin to change the shape of government, how we begin to change the shade of government, and the police department is one of the ways to begin to connect to the community. And so, I don't know what the demographics are, maybe it does represent the community. I don't see that when I see the sheriffs driving around. The other is that when you talk about de-escalation, I like the conversation. I teach somatic work. It's this idea of practices how we begin to change neural pathways so we can, we can address it differently. What Miranda just brought up to me is an example that when a police officer usually comes to my window, there's already a disconnect. The way they address me is they've created a tightness. I get tighter, they get tighter. So, this idea of de-escalation goes much deeper than this sense of training. It actually has to be a declaration that that is how we're approaching it. I listened to the chief, I believe, from Daytona, Florida, who basically said, "What we're doing is we're creating time and distance to the situation." Our officers get out a block or a half a block away, and they walk to the situation. They get a chance to see what's going on, people see them. It changes the temperature versus hopping out of the car. They're tight, the people are tight, and it just continues to escalate. I know that's not something that can always be done, but it's a, it's a way of beginning to understand that we need space as much as the officers need space. The officers are demanding us to get out or get on our knees, or do things that are not normal for us. And they say, "You didn't listen to us." Well, it's not our norm. I don't get up listening to officers. I get up listening to my dad tell me every time I walk out of the house that you're not safe. That if authorities approach you, you're not safe. If you have a problem, you do not go there. So, and I have a 13-month-old son, and in 2020, I am looking at educating him to have the same language in 2020. My grandfather had people burning crosses and burning his barn down, and now my son is facing the same stuff with different language around it. So, I think that, I love the conversation, I want to see what the practice is, I want to see how we're bringing this in. One of the things, Chief, that I feel that you didn't address was this in-depth reporting. And how do we get a chance to see the reporting that these officers are bringing in? My question is that when an officer says something like "George Floyd deserved it", that tightens the community. It makes, it puts me on my heels. That's me. George Floyd is me. A knee on my neck. And if an officer thinks that way and has the freedom to express that, it tells me that I can't trust you. I should not turn to you. And I want to. We were at a protest, and I made sure I brought my son over, and I talked to the officers there, because I want them to know his name. I want, I want to know, how is the sheriff's department participating in community activities so they know these children's names? You don't shoot somebody when you know their name. So, this is the tip of the iceberg of what I have to say, and I appreciate the energy, but I hope that someday I look on the screen and I see the Hispanic community represented in this screen as much as I see you, because they're a big part of this community, and yet, we don't see it. I want to be able to look in the car and say, "I'm represented, and everyone's represented in this." So, there's a lot of work to be done, and I, I've heard lip service forever. Forever. I watched the riots in Chicago, right? Peaceful demonstrations, and it was the police who kicked our butts and hosed us down and sent dogs on us. So, this has to be a practice, it has to be a declaration. It has to be something you're saying every single day. It has to be this idea that when you walk up to the car, that I'm gonna de-escalate the way that I approach people. And I have to understand that they don't know, they're afraid. They're afraid, they may not do what they tell me because they're afraid. Get out of the car, I'm afraid to get out of the car, I'd rather start it and take off, because I don't know what's gonna happen. So, a lot more to be said. Mayor, I appreciate your energy, I saw you at the protest that we participated in, and I just feel that the messages that you're bringing out, it lets me know that I'm in a community that is at least gonna try. And I'm gonna keep watching this, and I have to find out if this is a community that's receptive and really wants me to be a part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. I feel the passion behind that, thank you so much for your words. And we'll talk to the demographics, I think, later, as we get into the question portion.
Thanks, RJ. Next, we have Edwin. Sorry, Ruby, go ahead. Ruby Salazar.
Hello. Hi, my name is Ruby Salazar, and I work with the Youth Leadership Institute, an organization that serves youth in San Mateo County, including Half Moon Bay, but today I'm here as a community member. When I was four years old, four years old, I was at Santa Cruz Beach Boardwalk with my family when I got lost. I remember walking around when I saw two police officers. Most people would think that I would have gone for them to help, but no. I was so scared, I ran in the opposite direction, because from a young age, I knew that the police department was not a friend, but a danger. Many people also believe this, and we need to change that. We need to have the police department be more approachable and be on our side, to pull us over, but not have the first question be license and registration, "But how was your day?", and explain to us why we were pulled over calmly. Recently, I have seen a petition going around about San Mateo County Officer Lubal, who made what some may call racist comments toward the George Floyd situation on his personal Facebook account. I also recently learned that Officer Lubal policed Half Moon Bay High School in 2008. And I wanted to ask a few questions that that I think the department and city council should keep in mind. How does policing in Half Moon Bay High School look like? Does Half Moon Bay High School need policing? When does the department get involved? How will the department make a stance around police brutality, social injustices, and excessive force used by our Black community members and people of color in San Mateo County? What new trainings will the department get around police brutality, excessive force, and racial injustice? Thank you, Mayor Eisen, for creating this special meeting, and thank you Captain Saul Lopez, Sheriff Carlos Bolanos, and council members for taking time to be here and listening to my public comments. and council members for taking time to be here and listening to my public comment.
Thank you, Ruby. Great questions and hope we'll get to some of those again as we get to the question portion. Thank you for bringing those up.
Thanks, Ruby. Next, we have Karina DeWald. Karina, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Karina DeWald. I'm a resident of El Granada. And first of all, I just would like to say I really appreciate everyone being here and talking about this today. Being in such a small community, it's important to know that these things are happening around us too. We may not be in the middle of everything going on in LA or on the East Coast in New York City, but I think it's just as important that we address these issues here. And I just kind of had a couple of questions about what the San Mateo County Police Department plans to keep on doing, what Half Moon Bay plans to keep on doing. Past the eight can't wait. I appreciate you guys introducing that and elaborating on that to everyone here, but a lot of, a lot of people have already expressed dissent, kind of a disagreement with the eight, eight can't wait policies. Eight can't wait doesn't exactly address the, a lot of the public's concern about defunding the police, which doesn't exactly need to mean dismantling the police or anything like that, but at least relocating some of the funds of police departments into other areas of the community. As a recent graduate from Half Moon Bay High School, having started my education at Hatch Elementary, I realized that a lot, there's a lot more money that could be redirected to, towards our public school system here in Half Moon Bay. I don't know the extent to what weapons the Half Moon Bay Police Department have in terms of demilitarization, but I do think that we could redirect a lot of the money towards the community, talking about mental health awareness, education, things like that. And then I also had another question. San Francisco recently released a statement proclaiming that they are going to be, similar to the de-escalation situations, they are going to stop armed police officers from attending situations in terms of a mental health crisis or neighborhood disputes, things like that. And I was wondering if our city or if the San Mateo Police Department also had considered doing something like this, bringing more of, like you had addressed earlier, Captain, the, I think it was the PERT program in regards to bringing in mental health professionals into situations like this. So I just wanted to know if we had any more plans in terms of following in San Francisco's footsteps or something along the lines of that. And that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Karina.
Thank you.
Next.
And real quick, before you start, Jessica, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven more. I, I think we should go through all seven. And I don't know if somebody just added themselves, but maybe eight and then leave it there. And then let's get into the questioning so council can do their part. And, and so if you wouldn't mind, please keeping it to two minutes or else we're going to go way over. And we still have a council meeting we have to address too as well, with a lot of high-energy topics in there as well. So, but I do want to hear from the public and then I need council to be able to weigh in as well. So, thank you, Jessica. Go ahead. Proceed.
Virginia Turrisen, go ahead.
Good evening and thank you. Saul, I'd like to first off commend and respect your service to our community and your desire to work with all groups within our community. I value listening to the prior speakers and think their inputs and comments deserve serious attention. They are impactful and deeply moving stories. Longstanding improvement requires weeding out your bad cops and ensure your union focuses on the same and does not protect bad cops. It only takes one to destroy progress and community perception. I know you are trying hard and provide exceptional services on the coast. And in many respects, we've been limited in funding historically. I'd like to also acknowledge Tony Serrano as a great brother for keeping his sister's memory alive. And it's a noble cause to assist with mental health issues. These are difficult budget times, so some creativity will be needed moving forward. Thank you.
Great comments, Virginia. Thank you.
Next, we have Rosalyn Ramsey. Rosalyn, go ahead.
And Rosalyn.
Yeah, I was muted. I'm sorry. Okay, so what I'd like to do related, an incident that happened to me. It was in the winter of 2018, possibly 2019. I was on the local bike trail. I've been a resident of Half Moon Bay since the mid 70s. I went to high school here and I've lived in Miramar for 35 years. So I take the coastal bike trail a lot to get my exercise. And in the wintertime, I go at night. I was riding my bike. I had a, a white headlight, a red taillight, a yellow spokes lights on the front of my bike and blue spokes on the back. It was like I was a, oh, a driving carnival, so to speak. And I do that so people can see me. I proceeded to go north, past the Miramar, down to the harbor. I do a loop. I go down the wharf. I come back and I, I come back to my home. As I, as I was heading north, I passed the RV park, which is across from the skateboard park. And I saw bright lights and I heard a bullhorn. And I looked over and said, that's interesting. And I continued, went down to the harbor, did my loop, came back. When I got to the end of the bike trail by the Miramar where those restrooms are, two police officers stood out and held their hands up and commanded me to stop. That's fine. I stopped. They said, where are you from? What are you doing here? I said, I'm in, I live in Miramar. I've lived in Miramar for 30 years. I removed my hoodie at this point. I did not have a bike helmet on and my little ski cap that I wear. And I said, I'm a 58-year-old woman. What the hell is going on? They said, just a minute. They talked into their radios. They said, well, you matched the description of a female fugitive. I said, really? I said, I have all these lights on my bike? And there's somebody else riding around Half Moon Bay that looks like this? And they said, yep. So I said, well, I'm glad you asked questions first. They laughed. So did I. And I proceeded. I was stopped again as I went around the corner by another police officer who said, why didn't you stop when I had my bullhorn out? I said, I had no idea that was for me. I apologized and I went on my merry way. I believe I was racially profiled. I believe that they thought that I was a Hispanic person that might be possibly using the bike trail to go back and forth to work as a lot of Latin people in our community do. I do wear a bike helmet now because I feel like it legitimizes me. I was very upset about this incident. I, I talked to some police officers at the local farmer's market. A week or two later, they said I should go to the sheriff's substation. I went, it was closed. And I didn't follow up on it, but I have told many, many people about this. And so I, I like what I'm hearing. But we do, we need training. The police job is very difficult, but we need some middle ground here. This is a nationwide issue. And so I just want to make sure that things don't escalate to the point in the last couple of incidents that have happened here on the coast. I have another incident. I won't share it right now, but I will be happy to share it with anybody about an incident that happened here in Miramar on the eve of the last rally we had over by the skate park a couple of Sundays ago that was very, very scary late at night involving four police officers in front of my house with a family down the street. Anyway, that's all I'm going to say for now, but we do just, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
And next, we have Paul Gregoria. Paul, go ahead.
Okay, am I unmuted?
We can hear you.
Excellent. Just a quick question that follows up, I think, on a couple of the earlier speakers. I'd be real interested to see what the sheriff's department and the council are, might be thinking about along the lines of separating the law enforcement from service provision, particularly mental health service provision. I too think I heard London Breed today, the mayor of San Francisco, talking about steps she's taken to, to initiate, making, to start an initiative in this area. And having just finished the review of the 512-page report on the Moonridge incident, incident from 2014, I think that's going to be real important in our future. By the way, thanks to the council and to Captain Lopez for facilitating my acquisition of that report. The most time-consuming thing was figuring out how to download 512 pages from the DA's office to my computer, but it worked great. And it really turned my, opened my eyes as to what patrol officers have to put up with and the risks they take. And also the crying need for better coordination and communication and substitution of law enforcement services from mental health services, as I heard on TV today. Now, let's not talk them, you know, let's not shoot them down. Let's talk them down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Next, we have Julie McHenry. Julie, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I just finished watching the video of the June 5th shooting of Ms. Harmon in Half Moon Bay. And it's appalling to see. And clearly whatever de-escalation training is happening with our sheriffs is not working. So I echo a lot of the other comments that have been shared here tonight. I think the council has the obligation to revisit the contract and determine if we're being served by sheriffs or if we should have peace officers instead of police officers. And if those should be community-based professionals, people who live in our community. I also would like the council to look at any contracts for services provided by the sheriffs for our schools and consider whether those contracts should be, be re-signed or stopped. And then lastly, I support the reprioritization of funding to mental health and not police. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Raj, go ahead. You're up.
Hello, this is Arun Chankar Bittel. I'm Raj's dad. I'm asking a question on behalf of my entire family. I have, I'm a resident of Half Moon Bay. Now I'm a resident of El Granada. So thank you all. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to ask questions. So I have three questions. Question number one is on accountability and transparency to sheriff department. In past 12 months, how many deputies have you put in plan, performance plan, or fired because you had complaints? Or, you know, some statistics around it, right? How are you holding you, you all accountable, right? How many complaints you have received? How many you have resolved? How many people have gone in plan? How many you have fired, right? So that's the first one. Second question is for mayor. The question's around, how are you holding police accountable, right? Meaning, are you gonna ask police to hold police accountable? Or are you going to hire a third-party agency or yourself, one of you guys, who's going to monitor and hold police accountable, right? So that's the second question. And then the third question is, you're obviously renewing the contract of police. There is a great need for mental health professionals in, in the coast, right? So how much money are you taking out of your budget and reallocating to the mental health so that we can treat this, you know, challenge in a meaningful and a fair way? That's all. I appreciate the opportunity here. Thank you.
Yes, and, and thank you for asking those questions. I believe we can get to some of them in this portion and then some of the other ones later on when we get to the budget portion.
Paul Sorensen, go ahead.
That's interesting. This is David Oblovy, not Paul Sorensen. Did my kids play with my phone again?
Looks like.
Jessica's smiling. Okay. So I'm gonna forego the social commentary between being the whitest of white people and having zero experience. I don't think that accomplishes anything. But I think it's important, and I'm speaking directly to the council here, to recognize that we have a problem. And yes, recent events have brought that problem more to the forefront. But the problem I'm referencing here is when, if you're, if Yenira Serrano was an accident or misfortune or whatever else, Sandy Harmon was a failure of imagination. It was a failure of imagination on the part of the sheriff's department and it was a failure of imagination on the part of the city. And finally, it was a failure of execution on the part of the officers who were present. So I want to run a scenario by you and I'll be very brief because I know we're all busy. Imagine if the officer looking for Yenira that night saw her and approached her, not from the mindset of she's a threat to me, but instead, she's under my care. She's under my protection. Just chew on that one sometime. And do the same thing with Sandy Harmon. We don't know unfortunately because the sheriff has not given us the information. We don't know the interactions that the officer had with Ms. Harmon that led to the, the escalation. And so I can't comment on that. But what if instead of, there were more than 20 minutes between initial dispatch and when he actually came upon her? Why didn't Half Moon Bay dispatch our local mental health crisis counselor, who could also be a law enforcement individual unarmed, if you wish, to that scene? Coming from the Yenira Serrano scene, we know that sending cops to deal with mental health issues does not work and frequently ends in tragedy. A woman walking down Main Street with a wine bottle and a gun is a mental health issue. So what I want you to, again, speaking directly to the council here, what I want you to seriously consider now and later tonight is a pause on your contract negotiations and the almighty dollar to take a longer view and a longer look and provide a solution or solutions to dealing with the discrepancies between what police are being asked to do and what they really should be doing and what we are providing them as a community to support people who are minorities, people who have language disabilities or difficulties. The report on Yenira speaks about her yelling in gibberish. She was yelling in Spanish. The officer didn't speak Spanish. Okay, what are we doing about it? So I would ask you to find a pause and take, take whatever time it takes to try to put solutions in place to prevent these incidents from happening again. That's what we're paying you for. Wink, wink. And that's what I would hope you would work on in the wake of this, this past month and tonight. Thank you very much.
And your name has been changed. Thanks for your comments, David. And. Yeah.
We have Michael Orlicky.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Michael Orlicky. I pastor Coastside Baptist Church in Half Moon Bay. I want to thank the officers for being available tonight in the city council. Every time a tragedy occurs like this, the police are put under a spotlight, which is fine. But I want to ask, on the eight that can't wait, how much of those policies were already in place before these current events occurred? And also with all the talk about redirecting funding, will you have the resources to be able to handle everything that's been required and will be required of you? Because that's a concern of mine is that there's a lot being placed on the sheriff's department, the police department, when things like this occur. And obviously, you want to go over the events, you want to be able to scrutinize, what can we do better? What did we do wrong? But it just seems like all of a sudden they're, they're being asked to do a lot more and continue to do a lot more. And with events and situations that happen almost immediately or things that you have to make a decision real fast, I feel like there's. I feel like there's a, an extra burden put on our police officers. And I just want to know just how they're gonna handle this. And I thank you for your service, and I hope that the city council will approve the contract, because we definitely need policing and sheriff in our community, and they're not the bad guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Good comments.
We have one more raised hand, and then I have one email comment.
Perfect.
Alice Linsmire, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I am reading a letter that Tony Serrano referred to, where close to 300 people have signed just from Saturday morning. Just starting to circulate it, and it is in both English and Spanish. But with the time constraints, I'm just gonna read the English version. And it's to the, it's from the City of Half Moon Bay Latino Council, the Yanira Serrano Presente Program. Dear council members, thank you for your support of the recent outcry in the wake of the killing of George Floyd and against excessive use of force. The Latino Council stands in solidarity with Black Lives Matter. And as you have noted, our city needs to be a welcoming and, as Mayor Eisen said, a safe place for all people, no matter their color, religion, national origin, socioeconomic standing, gender, sexual orientation, or immigration status, unquote. As members of the Latino Council and residents of the Coastside, we are encouraged to have witnessed widespread support of these values, especially in the past few weeks. Many of us recall that, in the midst of all of this, we recognized the sixth anniversary of the shooting of 18-year-old Yanira Serrano by San Mateo County Deputy on June 3rd, 2014. The Serrano family, wanting to keep the community safe this year, invited us to light a candle in our own homes and with prayers, as they said, the rosary on the anniversary. The pain of the loss of a beloved community, member of our community at the hands of excessive force stays with us and also moves us to enact a program on behalf of her and others like her called the Yanira Serrano Presente Program. After the killing of Yanira, we gathered signatures from over 400 faith and community leaders and residents to provide crisis intervention training for all officers and to fund mental health first responders to assist law enforcement in de-escalating critical situations. Out of the many meetings mobilizing large groups at both city council and the board of supervisors, while we were heard, there was a small budget allocated to only three of such mental health counselors and one sheriff to work only during daytime hours, Monday to Friday, for the entire county located far from the Coastside. This is a start, but not nearly enough. To avoid any future loss of loved ones, and in this spirit, we, the underside, want the City of Half Moon Bay to approve the following. One, the Yanira Serrano Presente Program, which, with the following components. A, the Yanira Serrano Mental Health Program, raising funds for mental health services in the communities on the Coastside. The program should include cultural competence training, which includes a set of skills or processes that enable mental health professionals to provide services that are culturally appropriate for the diverse population on the coast. This also includes attention to noticeable language differences as well as how culture influences attitudes, expression of distress, and help-seeking practices. Bilingual, bicultural, Spanish-English counselors are needed. B, Yanira Serrano Community Outreach Program. Provides, we want to provide an orientation of all new sheriff deputies on the Coastside to meet with community leaders and Spanish-speaking and resident families to have a closer in-person connection with officers that get to know the community well. If we know of all the good people and work going on in our community, we are less likely to react out of prejudice and fear. C, a resource line, a bilingual call to offer resources, report positive interactions or abuses by authorities with procedures to work with the City of Half Moon Bay and sheriff for follow-up on each compliment and complaint. And number two, include in the city's contract with the San Mateo County Sheriff the following: adoption of the eight can't-wait policies that can reduce killings by police and save lives. The San Mateo County Sheriff has approved two of the eight measures. The other six: ban chokeholds and strangleholds, requires de-escalation, requires exhaust all alternatives before shooting, ban shooting at moving vehicles, has a use-of-force continuum, and requires comprehensive reporting, needs to be approved. Our pain can be put into prevention and policies that unify us to be able to say never again in the name of Half Moon Bay. We anxiously await your adoption of the Yanira Serrano Presente Program. The time is now, and we are the ones. Thank you. Latino Council of Half Moon Bay and residents of the Coastside. We will provide the signatures and the list of amazing support and comments to it. And just to add to that, that it's not just that we suggest that they, that there's, not just suggest that they give warning, but they require and they ban. It's not just a suggestion, but we'd like to see the actual policies and the disciplinary action that happens when it's violated. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you so much, Alice. And I believe we have one email comment that we should read out before we open it up to city council.
Yes, this email comment is from Jop Toonmon. I'm sure I'm pronouncing that incorrectly. I have two questions for the sheriff's department and the city council. What percent of responses that the sheriff's department responds to in the course of the year fall outside of what would reasonably be considered typical police work? I've been reflecting on the Dallas Chief of Police, who recently commented that the lack of funding of civic programs, for example, mental health, social services, and animal control, has led to his police force being tasked with all complaints, even when in some of these cases, the police may not be the best first response. And wanted to know what that might look for, look like for our community. Is the current level of PERT, if I have that acronym correct, staffing sufficient? Or do some measures of these cases still fall to duty officers? What percent of our city's budget is used for the sheriff's department contract? And are there presently budget line items that cover other non-police infrastructure for issues such as mental health, social services, and animal control? Or is all of that truly meant to be included in the sheriff's, sheriff department's remit? Thank you for opening up this learning session for the sheriff's department's times, time, and for being open to public comment on this matter. And the sheriff's department just self-described as a parliamentary organization. I'll accept that as being a true statement. But I would ask that the city council consider whether or not our community's needs are best served by a parliamentary organization or if community policing could possibly be accomplished by a less military-forward organization. Thank you.
Very good, very good. All right.
Concludes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. And now I'd like to open it up for city council to ask questions based on any of the other questions you've heard. If you would like to find out, you know, any of the answers to those questions or if you just have your own questions you'd like to ask. I will start out with Councilwoman Penrose.
Yes, I listened to everyone's comments tonight, and I listened to our show and to our chief of police. And I think this is a huge problem. It's not just nationwide, it's here at home. And it's everywhere around us. I would like us to hold some sort of a study session where we can invite the community to come in, invite experts to come in. And I don't know that we can accomplish it all in one meeting, but I think it's, I think it's imperative on us to deal with this as a very serious situation and to do it in a way that is totally transparent. And I think a community meeting is, is the best way to do that.
Okay, I like the idea. Thank you. Yeah, good suggestions. Do you want us to discuss that now or are you just throwing it out there for general discussion or?
No, I, I would like to see us go ahead and schedule something. I mean, maybe we don't have the schedule in front of us, but commit to having a meeting of this sort.
I concur that it would be a good idea. I listened to a lot of comments, very thoughtful ones. One of the ideas that was presented more than once makes some sense to me that we should consider, and that is, right now, the deputies are rotated out of the Coastside after they've been here a couple of years. That's the policy. I think if we had deputies who were on the coast for a longer period of time, and also the idea of introducing the deputies to the community so that we would know who they are and they would know who we are, I think that would be a helpful way to reduce some of this fear that a lot of us have for deputies. And that's what I would propose we could do.
Very good. So, and we'll get to you in a second, Debbie. So what Harvey just said, is how viable of an option is something like that? What's the story there?
Yeah, we've talked about it in the past, and depending on the needs of the sheriff's officers, people are moved. But for the most part, we do bring in deputies here for a longer period of time within the city limits of Half Moon Bay. And to Harvey's point and to a lot of the callers, that is one of the important things about our school resource officers, being at the schools and getting to know the kids and having those special relationships with them to gain not only their trust, but also build the trust with their parents. And that also goes with the very robust community policing programs that we have with KARON and also the Sheriff's Activities League, which, as everyone knows, I always highlight every year during the annual report. And we literally invest heavily out here on the Coastside in regards to getting to know the kids, certain activities. As a matter of fact, currently, we're doing a, this week, a donation pickup where underprivileged families are allowed to come to the EOC and pick up clothing that the SAL program has collected for their use. And during the COVID, during this COVID time, the sheriff's office has delivered hundreds of meals on the Coastside to families in need. So we are constantly in communication with community leaders. Rita from Puente, she is the director of Puente. She's on our SAL board. And I have close communications, not only with her, but also with the people of ALS. I've been, you know, I've established those relationships with them. They have my phone number, and anytime things are needed or there's a communication to be had, I'm more than happy to meet with them and address these type of issues. I do hear what the public's saying. I hear what the council's saying. And we try our best to really establish those open communication lines. Sometimes we cannot prevent movement of personnel because there are needs in other divisions of the office.
Thank you, Saul.
Yeah, very good. And then I saw Councilwoman Ruddock had her hand up. Sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, so I concur with Harvey. I think anything we can do to get some continuity of deputies on the coast and getting to know our folks and our various organizations, I think we should try to make that happen. I understand, you know, personnel needs. But if we can work out something so that we're recruiting for the coast, that would be good. But at least some sort of standard in terms of time. I think that's so important. If you're gonna do community policing, that's kind of what it takes. I had a question about school policing. I don't know what CUSD does, but I'm assuming that they're responsible for, directly with the sheriff's office, for any policing done in the schools?
I'm sorry, Debbie. The acronym again?
The school district.
Oh, so, so we are in partnership with the majority of school districts in our county. We have school resource officers in all the jurisdictions that we serve. Millbrae, San Carlos, the Coastside, unincorporated Redwood City, including Woodside and Portola Valley. So we are definitely in communication with the school districts themselves. And matter of fact, I have a great relationship with the superintendent of Cabrillo. And we are always communicating with each other when there's needs on the campus, when there's smaller criminal acts, vandalism, thefts, or something to that point. The schools are very receptive to having us there. A lot of the concern came to have school resource officers on campus after a very long line of active shooter incidents around the country. And that's what really evolved us going into the schools and being more present to really deter that type of activity and to help the school officials investigate even crimes that occur within campus.
Sounds good. I would like to point out for the public that all the various services that Saul was discussing, that they undertake here on the coast, whether it's SAL or KARON or some of the other programs they have, and they're very involved here. The city does not pay for those services. So you'll see in the item about the sheriff's budget and the contract, that basically about 90% of it goes to salaries. And then there's a piece for administration. But the community benefits from those services not through taxes in Half Moon Bay. It's paid for by the county as a whole, and these services are delivered to the county as a whole. So we're very, we're very grateful for that arrangement. And I'll talk more about what I think about, you know, the agreement later on. But to the point about defunding police, we can't go without a police force, and we can't go without law and order. There are a lot of guns on our streets, a lot of mental illness as a result of the shredding of our safety net. The public schools are in trouble. Basically, our institutions are broken. And we've actually loaded up two of them to try to solve most of our social problems, the school system and the police. Everything else is just falling in their lap. So we have much bigger problems than eight can't wait. But what I believe is, we have to work with the police now and make that better all the time. The quality of the policing, the quality of the police, at the same time that we have to invest in our social services. So I believe in law and order, but I also believe in the delivery of a very strong social safety net. And to the extent that we can build that in our community, even though we don't have the resources of the county, we want to do that. And, you know, we're giving a lot of grants this year in this budget to very, very good organizations that are working on mental health issues and health issues in general, homeless issues. We have a contract to work with abundant grace tonight. So, you know, we've come a long way, and we want to build on those things. But we can't, but we have to do it on parallel tracks. We've got to work and improve our policing. We have to improve our social safety net. So I hear what people are saying. I'm hearing a lot of different things outside of this meeting. I spent a lot of time reading about this this weekend. My head is spinning. I'm learning a lot about other people. I'm learning a lot about myself and what I value. So it's been, it's been great for that. I like Deborah's suggestion about a, like a town meeting. And I'd like to also add a component to that, which would be the council subcommittee to look very closely at our contract, at the the police manual that the county provides. Because, you know, under our contract, and there are several contract cities in the county, we have to abide by the county's policies in terms of training and other things, right? We can, we have some flexibility in the services that we provide in the service level. But policies and training, all that are decided by the county. So I'd like us to form a subcommittee to review all these issues, review our current contract, get more public input with additional meetings. I think the contract cities ought to bind together. That's actually an idea of the city manager. He's already talking to some people about how we might have more leverage in the county-wide policing, but, but we must do it. And it's, it's, it's critical. We can't, this is something we can't ignore anymore. But I want to make us very aware of the social safety net problem. We have to, you know, vote in the right people at the state and federal level. We have to have money for affordable housing from the federal government. We need adequate healthcare. What I'd like to see is defund the USM. to see is to fund the US military. I'm going to be totally clear about that. It's sucking up a lot of our resources when we could be funding education and healthcare for all of us. So, I'm going to get off my pedestal, but my proposal would be the council subcommittee and the level of outreach that Dr. Penrose was telling. Thanks, and thanks to all of you for coming tonight, and thank you to the sheriff's office for all the additional prep for this meeting they've done and putting together the information that we could possibly leverage.
Very good. Robert?
There, sorry. Yeah, I'll be brief, because I know I spent some time with a friend and my questions. Yeah, I really agree with our other council members. I really liked the letter from the Latino council that was read to us out loud. I think there were some great suggestions. What I liked about it most was, we have to focus on what we have control over. And whatever programs we want, we want to come up with in cooperation with the community and the sheriff's department should be customized for the coast side. And if we're going to create some mental health services for the coast side, that will supplement what's already provided through our contracts with the county, we've already done it. We've already started. Our grant program was a great start. As Debbie mentioned, we've put money into some mental health programs, but it's kind of some baseline stuff. When it came to working with a homeless issue, we had matching funds from the county, and we each put in $300,000, $600,000 total to support Abundant Grace, to put in a homeless development center. It's great. I'd like to see more opportunities like that. If we identify specifically what should be identified through Yanira Serrano Mental Health Program, as we have more meetings with the community and the sheriff's department, that would be a great example. Yes, I think the city could commit to putting more money into that and hopefully get matching funds from the county. I think we have examples from some other cities. Camden, New Jersey has been put forth as a great example of some programs they put forth. I've read a lot of details of that program. Some might be applicable to the coast side, especially as it regards, I think we already do some good work involving the sheriff's officers who are out here with the community. So, people, so that every member of the community sees the sheriff's department as a go-to resource, not someone that's not a department of field threatened by, but people who they want to call first when there's a problem. And I think Camden has done some interesting programs along, and we can learn from them and could augment what we're already doing. So, so great. Really appreciate the support of all the council and the comments from the community were fantastic. I took notes on what everyone said, and I thought they were very moving. And thank you all for participating.
Excellent. Thank you, Robert. Thanks. Thank you all, council. Great, great stuff, great suggestions. Thank you, public. Thank you. And I'm sorry if this is wrong, but Sheriff Bolano and Sheriff Saul Lopez and the leaders for attending this event. I really appreciate it. I just hope I'm, when I say wrong, I hope I'm getting your titles right. I don't remember exactly what your specific titles are, but we really appreciate you being here and listening to the public and listening to us. I do have a couple of questions that came up from the public that I was curious, and I'll just mention all three of them to see if we can get there on the answers to those, and then I'll get into my little speech afterwards. But mental health sounded like a big issue that people were talking about, and particularly, you know, Yerena Serrano, with what, what did we do differently from that time period until now to kind of ensure that these events wouldn't happen moving forward as best as possible? Because I believe we enacted some change after that happened, and I wasn't on council at that point or, you know, part of the situation then. But what, what did we do at that point? And I'll go through all three. And then the other part was, just really quickly, I don't know if this is allowable, but the demographics question, you know, and then just what happens with, like, in terms of, I didn't know about this person yet, but the La Ball or Low Ball, I don't know his name yet exactly, but what do we do and what is the track record for those type of officers? And then after you go through that, those questions, I'm just going to kind of give my little speech, and we can go from there.
I can go ahead and speak on, on what happened after the 2014 incident. As I mentioned during, during the conversation today, the sheriff at the time and undersheriff Bolanos at the time, and now sheriff, decided that it was important to create the psychiatric emergency response team. And we went from one detective to two detectives and two mental health clinicians. Again, these folks do work during daytime hours, but they are on-call 24/7. And I mentioned the, the numbers that we've dealt with here locally within the city of Half Moon Bay, and how many they fought, how many cases they followed up with, which was 18. And that was to coordinate services with the family members and those affected by the 5150 hold, where we hope that deputies don't have to revisit that home or that location to deal with that same person to prevent injury to them or the deputies and create a critical incident, as we've all experienced. So...
And real quick, is that the main, is that the main purpose behind it as opposed to the actual, like, in the moment? How, I wouldn't expect that person to necessarily be able to come out and de-escalate those situations. What, what the purpose is, is probably dealing with it in that one visit as much, that's the, generally speaking?
So, i-if, if time allows, I mean, it's all about the time allowance at the call for service. If time allows, the deputies on scene will call out if they're able to gain compliance and calm that person down without taking any type of use of force escalation, just actually just a conversation with that person. And they feel that the family does not have the means or the know-how how to get this person help, the subject, well, then they call pert. Pert are basically 24-hour counselors to the deputies, even though they're deputies themselves. The sheriff's office right now is in development of a enhanced crisis intervention position or positions in every single patrol bureau. We are following the model of Portland Police, who have advanced this crisis intervention training for their officers. With a lot of situations they had, we sent a group of deputies up to Portland to ride with these folks that are certified. So, this is additional training that we're going to provide to people in every single bureau. So, they're going to be the localized expert for our patrol deputies, even though they're on patrol themselves, if that makes sense. So, we're trying to localize that type of help to better identify a lot of the folks that are going through a mental health crisis.
Good. Thank you. And then are we not able to answer the other questions per se, or is that a different area, or?
With, with the demographics of the office personnel, I'm, that's something that I don't have at hand, and I don't know if the sheriff wants to speak to it, but our professional standards bureau would probably have that information.
Okay.
Yeah, I can speak to it a little bit. We, we are a very diverse organization, and we can certainly gather some stats and provide them to the council if you would like.
Okay, very good. And then, you know, there was that whole piece on what happens to an officer discipline. It's not, you don't need to get into specifics by any stretch of the imagination, but i-is there any way to talk to what the current, like, general practice is on that, in any way, shape, or form? I don't know if that answers?
I can do so quickly, being respective of your time. We hold everybody accountable. Our officers also have, our deputy sheriffs have due process. But we, if someone is alleged and we sustain an act of excessive force that is serious enough, we have, we have terminated people and will continue to do so. It is not, not acceptable to me.
Very good. That's, I'll accept that. Absolutely. Thank you so much for that one. And then lastly, this is kind of like out there a little bit, but just in terms of when you hire future officers, and one of our council members talked about this already, but, you know, kind of like weeding out the bad ones. Generally speaking, I would say that the majority of cops are very good and, you know, serve communities very well. And then maybe there's a few sometimes bad apples in different areas. How do we evaluate the mental and emotional state of the people we're hiring, you know, moving forward? Is there any, is there any practice going on from that perspective, or could we initiate anything? I'm just, just for my own, this is all my own gathering of information.
You know, it, it probably one of the hardest things to be is a police officer nowadays.
Yeah.
You have to take a written test. You have to take a psychological. You have to go through a background polygraph. Very few people make it all the way to the end. And even then, of course, there's going to be people that we have to address. And we do, through training, through supervision, and through the disciplinary process when needed.
All right. Mr. Bolanos, thank you so much for answering the questions. Thank you so much for attending.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Saul, as well. Very much appreciate your time and energy. I am not entirely sure, Bob, and hopefully you can direct me on how we go about what Councilwoman Penrose suggested and what Councilwoman Ruddock suggested as well. One was a separate meeting, one was a subcommittee. And then before we get to those, but real quick, what I don't want is for us just to create, and I'm sure this is not what we're trying to do, but I just want to be very open about it. But I don't want to just create committees, and I don't want to just create other meetings. What, you know, what I want to do is help deal with the issue at, that we're talking about tonight. And so, when we are suggesting these things, I want to be very clear that we're not trying to just push this into other realms. It's just that, as Councilwoman Ruddock put so eloquently, there is a lot of research and studying that is going on right now, and we are learning ourselves about the process and everything that's involved in it. And there's just a lot to do. So, I mean, I'm fully supportive of the subcommittee. I'm fully supportive of another meeting, but I don't want that to just be people's thought process of, oh, they're just pushing it off. It's just, there is so much to dig into that I think that is, those are both very good suggestions, so we can get further into these topics and learn more about how we can influence change. And that's basically it. So, how do we go about that?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I was thinking about that after Councilmember Ruddock made her comment and Councilmember Penrose, and then just as you were speaking. So, first of all, of course, it sounds like there's concurrence to do both those things among the council. So, picking the two-member subcommittee would be a step that I would ask the council to take tonight. And then my thoughts are, with regard to the contract, I agree with everything Councilmember Ruddock said. It's a very, it's a big contract. It's an important contract. It represents almost 30% of our budget, and we're now into the ninth year of that contract. We have two years on the extension. And with everything that's going on, it makes perfect sense that we would have a subcommittee that would take a deeper dive with, with staff, with, with myself, deputy city manager, and maybe meet two or three times a year. So, when the amendment comes to the full council each year, it has been vetted at a little bit deeper level than what is, than what you are receiving now by the subcommittee. So, they understand how the money is spent, what the policies are, what flexibility we do have. So, I think, I think that it is a very positive thing for a subcommittee of two to be more informed on, on this specific issue. Since it's so important, it's such an important part of what the city does is law enforcement. So, maybe they meet three times a year. Those, those meetings would be open to the public as all our subcommittees are. And, and the additional task I would give to that subcommittee is helping to plan the agenda for the community meeting that Councilmember Penrose brought up. So, to your point, we want to do it right. We want it to be a focused community meeting. This was very valuable. This was a very valuable start, and we're an hour and 45 minutes into this. And so, I think the subcommittee could help staff put together kind of the, the itinerary for this meeting so that we can take a bit of a deeper dive with the community for that community meeting as well. So, it goes, goes beyond what we started here. So, that's how I would see it. I embrace both ideas. And with, with the two names of the subcommittee, we would get on that. I don't know that we could have this community meeting anytime soon. We have...
No, that's the thing.
We're going, we're going to go dark a couple of meetings during the summertime, but I think we'll get the subcommittee meeting right away. They can, they can then start to help us plan the date and the agenda for the community meeting.
Very good. I like it.
Mr. Mayor, may I add some clarification?
Please.
Yeah, just as it relates to the sheriff's office policies, you know, I have from time to time presented those to the board of supervisors for their, for review. But sometimes people get confused in regards to the fact that as an independently elected official, I don't report to the board, and I have the final say on the policies. Having said that, I'm always open to citizen interaction and would welcome the council subcommittee to work with Chief Lopez. But I want to be clear so that people's expectations are not unrealistic in any way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think, I think, I think I got your, I think I got what you're saying there.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. And so, Debbie Ruddock, please.
I would just like to suggest an alternative approach, Bob, if you don't mind. The committee needs to do a deep dive, and I would say the committee, subcommittee needs to get on that, like, right away. You know, I see that as sort of an intensive process. We might not get to a meeting until, you know, September or something. I think the subcommittee can probably meet, you know, at its leisure, since it's an ad hoc committee, without notice and all that stuff, and try to get a lot of, you know, information together. But I think, you know, once we do that, I think it would be best for Deborah to work directly with the city manager on planning the community meeting. You know, we, what, once you know kind of where we're at, and we can tell you what information we'd like to bring forward, then maybe you and Deborah work out the meeting. So, I think she has a vision of what this meeting should be.
Oh, well, why don't we just put her on the subcommittee? And then she says, so that way she can...
She can't be a subcommittee. But yeah, I mean, she could be one of the two.
One of the two, absolutely. No, I mean, no problem.
And I hear, I hear that about it being an ad hoc committee, so that's a different committee. Catherine can certainly weigh in on that as opposed to a standing committee. Thank you.
It might become a standing committee at some point, but, yeah. I mean, still interact with the city manager, not just cut the city manager, the deputy out of it, but I think the work needs to start moving.
And it sounds like this ad hoc committee would be focused on the immediate task at hand, but I could see if it, if it becomes, you know, if its jurisdiction sort of extends to every year looking at the sheriff's contract, it would perhaps lend itself to a standing committee. But I, it sounds like the scope is narrow enough right now for an ad hoc arrangement.
And then just so I'm clear, an ad hoc would just be, people can meet whenever they want to, and there, there's no involvement of, like, city staff or, or Saul, anybody like that at the initial stages of that? And then we could involve them when we do the meeting? Is that the general?
Well, I'm, I'm, right now, it's just a data gathering sort of group.
Yeah.
We would want to get some involvement from the city manager and the deputy city manager, develop our list of questions. It might do outreach to Saul or Sheriff Bolanos. But the initial task is sort of reviewing and information gathering, maybe developing, you know, some recommendations. But, you know, things that are possible for even deeper dives. In other words, policy dives with the public, you know, and other city staff. So, we think these areas are fertile for more deliberation. And here's a good reason to bring this to a public meeting and do some outreach, right? And then we just sort of go deeper. So, this group is just going to ask the questions, get the information, make some recommendations, but it's a data gathering machine.
I mean, I'm absolutely fine with that. Robert or Harvey?
I would like to be on that subcommittee.
Okay. Robert?
That sounds like two folks. Well, actually, I didn't hear from Deborah if she's willing. Debbie volunteered, I wasn't sure if Deborah was interested.
Robert, if you would like to be on the committee, I'd be happy to have you serve on it.
Well, I think, I do agree with Debbie that you had a vision for what that...
Yeah, let her do it.
...session should look like. So... Session should look like, so that makes sense to me, I mean, I'm happy to help out also.
No, let's, I I I unless Debbie, do you have, do you have a, are you okay having Harvey and Deborah?
I'm fine with it.
I'm also fine with it. It sounds like Robert is okay with it, and I like the fact that I would rather have Deborah on it, especially if she's going to be organizing the meeting and has a vision for it. I say let's, let's run with that personally. Do we need more direction or voting power on that, Bob, or is that enough for you moving forward? You're clear? Counsel, do you guys feel anything else needs to be discussed on this immediately before we move onward? All right, all right, well, I think, I I just want to thank, I I mean, I've said it a million times. Thank you all for doing, for being a part of this conversation, the conversation is not ending here. It will continue, we've got a subcommittee now, we'll have another meeting, we hope you all are there. Keep lending your opinions, your voices, and I I I think it's really important to, from my perspective. I am learning a lot through this process, so please let your voices continue to be heard. Because it's, you know, it's it's good to get input, and we appreciate it. So with that, I'm going to move to the city council, start of the city council meeting, this was the study session. We're going to do a five-minute break, and actually, let's just go, let's start at eight o'clock, it's seven fifty-one now. We're going to transition, you you can stay on the same link, you can mute yourself and take your camera off, and we will restart the official city council meeting after, you know, this end the study session, start the city council meeting at eight o'clock, is that good, Bob?
I thought it was a new link for us, no?
Jessica, I believe it's the same link, is it not?
It's the same link, Debbie.
Okay. Very good, good question.
Thelves on mute and stop the video and we'll be back at eight o'clock.